...for treatment. I deal with the disease of addiction and drugs and alcohol, especially heroin and meth, in the state of Maine. I see it all the time on a daily basis. I'm very active in the recovery area. I work with a lot of people and it's hard to look into someone's eyes and tell them that really wants help or may or may not want help but is asking for help, but I cannot help them because there's not a bed available for them. Because I know from my own experience, not just of my own effects, but the effects it has on the community and the family because of the unhealthy choices that we make or under the influence of the substance. So I remain active and today by going through, by going through the program of Wellspring. I graduated Wellspring and now I am a secretary at two recovery-based homes that house eight to, eight to 12 people on any given time. I continue to not only deal with but live with people and give them maybe a sense of hope, but the demand for treatment facilities, especially in Maine, especially in the Bangor area where I'm from, is an urgent. You know, I see it all the time, the brokenness and despair in people's eyes and having to turn them away because there is no other alternative at that moment for them. And so I'm just here to say that I hope that this bill goes through and helps many people just like me and give them a chance to be a productive member of society because for so long, my addiction wouldn't allow me to have that chance.
Matthew, you mentioned incarceration. What were you incarcerated?
I was incarcerated in, for three and a half years, in and out between 2006 to 2012.
State facilities or?
No, counties.
Okay.
But I had been in the legal system since 2006 all the way up until 2014, you know, in and out, in our probation.
Did the county offer any treatment, education, that sort of thing?
There was, there was select meetings. I know there was an extremely long waiting list for, for any treatment facilities. I mean, I-
Well, yeah, not facilities, but I mean within-
In-house?
In-house, yes.
Trying to get anything done in the county jail is, is a long process.
Yeah.
No.
It was something curious.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Very good. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Bruce Campbell.
Thank you. I guess I don't have to go overboard anymore. Anyway.
Were you saying it's warm enough in here?
I think so, yeah, yeah. To the chairs and the members of the committees, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bruce Campbell. I'm the chair of order directors of the Bangor area recovery network. I could just explain briefly what the barn is. We're a community recovery center located in Brewer and we serve the greater Bangor area. We provide a whole range of recovery support services. We have four pillars that we refer to as the foundation, or barns, four pillars of barns foundation. We believe that recovery is a process. We heard that earlier. That recovery is not an event. It's not a one-time. It's done over. It is a process that over the long term achieves many positive outcomes. We also believe that there are many pathways to recovery. There's not one single way that someone enters into this process that results in recovery. And we define recovery as that process that leads to improved health, wellness, and quality of life. We believe that recovery overcomes shame and stigma. And when people talk about why do we treat addiction differently than we treat diabetes, we can look to shame and stigma as the root cause for that differential. But most importantly, we believe that supporting recovery is a community responsibility. We support the proposed legislation to increase funding for prevention, treatment, and recovery services. And we applaud the legislator's wisdom in realizing that we simply can't arrest our way out of these problems, but that we must also include the demand reduction strategies contained in the proposal. In 2012, Barn participated in a study demonstrating the relationships and the effects of resiliency and recovery. And the study showed that the longer people sustain recovery, the more they sustain that recovery through informal community supports rather than formal treatment services. Not taxpayer-funded professional services, but neighborhood, community-driven peer supports systems. Supporting recovery is a community responsibility, and we need to be able to support the entire process. And the payoff is dramatic. A recent study shows that in recovery, costs associated with emergency room visits and criminal justice involvement decreased tenfold. And at the same time that all of the negative outcomes of addiction are decreased, positive outcomes of employment, education, civic involvement, family involvement, increase. We've already heard it today that addiction spares no one. And investments in treatment and recovery pay dividends far beyond this budget cycle. I know this from my own life. Thirty years ago, I was living in a school bus with one speaker of running water. And in my recovery, I've been able to return to school, earn my graduate degree, raise my family, own my home, pay my taxes. From this perspective, I think it's pretty easy and good to bear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you very much. Pat Kimball.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are you all? So good afternoon, Senator Brackley, Senator Hammer, Representative Gutte, Representative Rupondo, Members of Appropriations and Health and Human Services. My name is Pat Kimball and I am the proud executive director for Wellspring, a substance abuse treatment center located in Bangor, and the current president of the Maine Association of Substance Abuse Programs. I'm here today representing Mesa in support of LR 2599, an act combat drug addiction through enforcement, treatment, and recovery. According to the most recent DHHS and SAM's cost data, the economic impact of substance use in our state in Maine in 2010 was $1.4 billion. We do not have current costs of substance use disorders to our state, but in renewing the data on behavioral health treatment, public safety, social service costs, and an increase in drug overdoses, the financial impact can only have increased. We know that the cost of untreated substance abuse is huge, but let's not forget the toll that it has on our families and children. At least one time per day, if not more, I get a call from a family member who is in need of treatment. They've called everywhere but cannot find treatment for someone they love reaching out for help. The national research shows that access to treatment and recovery is critical investment. And this bill is the beginning of a comprehensive plan to start the process of recovery for our state. For over 20 years, Mesa has been a leader in prevention, treatment, and recovery. The membership of Mesa represents some of the most respected and quality programs throughout our state. Mesa members represent all levels of treatment and have programs all over the state. Some of those members are Arustic Mental Health Center, Day One, Crossroads, Catholic Charities, Kendrick Behavioral Health, Tri-County Mental Health, Midcoast Hospital, Milestone Foundation, Wellspring, Crisis and Counseling, the Penobscot Nation Behavioral Health, Maine General Behavioral Health. Those are just a few. Excuse those members if I may have left out. These programs understand the importance of access to treatment and know that research has stated that no single treatment is appropriate for all individuals. And the remaining in treatment for an adequate period of time is critical for treatment effectiveness. Research shows treatment works, but treatment has to be available. This will assist individuals and families in the much-needed care to start that road to recovery. Mesa also represents recovery programs through their work with the Maine Alliance of Addiction Recovery, MAR. MAR is the only statewide presence of recovery group. They are building recovery resources and working with communities, law enforcement, public safety, and others. Mesa developed and opened the Portland Community Recovery Center three years ago. This program grew into a seven-day-a-week center with 38,000 visits in the year and a significant outcome showing its effectiveness in helping people maintain recovery. With this funding, Mesa will be able to develop recovery sources and new recovery centers statewide. We will also be able to have funding to maintain our prevention program, MAPSA, which will be available to make a difference in our communities. When you combine law enforcement, treatment, prevention, and recovery, you will have a plan that will lead to sustainable change in our safer communities. This bill is a true investment and will also save the lives of many. Mesa and its members are available to share their expertise, knowledge, and understanding of substance use disorders with anyone who would like to know more. Thank you again for listening and your support. This is very important.
Rep. Sanders.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being, you heard earlier today with the department that some of the agencies have let money get, go bad. Have you had a problem letting money go back to the department? And if not, were you able to get additional money saying they had, since they had the money left over?
So I can share with you that I have had money left over. And I can share with you why. So some of the issues that you've heard today are about access to treatment because mostly in residential, there's not enough available beds, and the crisis that has occurred with those with uninsured. So sometimes what happens is, we know, we have a formula that we know we can only accept so many people who are uninsured into our programs to keep the bottom line. But then what happens is, when they enter treatment, we find that they are eligible for main care, so we put them on main care. So then we discover, okay, we got the main care, we have additional dollars. We also have private funding, so private funding is there. That's deducted from our state share. So any revenues that we earn, those against state dollars, which is, again, should be so, rightfully so. So sometimes there's staffing shortages, there's a prediction in the, in winter, there's all sorts of that. We have to operate at 90% capacity and we are at 90% capacity most of the time, if not 100%. The only time we have a gap in that is when we're waiting for somebody to be released from jail, so there may be a three or four-day gap. But there are instances that we have had money that is there. Because, again, as an agency, we want to be fiscally responsible. Sometimes what happens, particularly at the end of the fiscal year, we accepted somebody who thought was a self-pay or money we would take from a contract, ended up getting main care dollars, and therefore misjudged our budget. So it happens. We have also had times when, years ago, we were short. But for the past three years, since we have had a difficulty time because of the non-tax disappearing and our, the population that we work with, particularly in our residential program, with predicting non-insured and how we get them on. Because really, our role is to find a way to get them insured. So sometimes that works against you. But the problem with treatment access really boils down to the fact that these are mostly uninsured people and have no way to pay for treatment. And treatment programs can only have the capacity to take so many people who can't pay the bills. I have bills like everybody else. I gotta pay my staff. My rates haven't increased in my residential center in five years. The amount of funding that we get from the, from very generous, the contract dollars that we get has not increased in 15 years. So we have had to really look and dig deep within our agency to be able to support ourselves in a fiscally responsible way.
Thank you.
Rep. Sanders.
Thank you. Just to be clear here. So what you're saying is that $500,000 that you got for churn every year is more of a, it's an accounting issue more than a lack of or unused capacity?
It's, it's, yeah, it's, again, if you're lucky enough to get a grant that ends up there, if you're lucky enough to get, you know, a private donor that pays for that, or, again, if you had brought somebody in that self-pay, but you realized they were court ordered to treatment through the Office of Child and Family Services, they are now paying the bills. So it's this balance that you do. When people talk about the wait, they're talking about, I only have, between the two programs, 28 beds. So that's all I have. And they're with us, sometimes up to 180 days. So those beds don't turn over quickly. And so consequently, it causes this backlog in many residencies. When you look at the numbers from the state in regard to outpatient services, those are people that are fortunate enough to get into the program to begin with. So when you see those short wait times, we don't have any way of calculating how many people actually called and never got in because they disappeared. When you talk about the difficulty in the detox beds, for instance, at Milestone, Milestone doesn't keep a wait, because really, when somebody calls looking for a detox bed, you can't say, "Let me take your name and I'll call you in three weeks." So that becomes a really hard statistic-wise to narrow that down. All I can tell you is, I think that is a really long time. And I have never had so many people reach out and ask me to help them. I have right now on my email, two families looking for help for their daughter, for their daughters constantly, and they're mostly uninsured. They're people who desperately need help, who keep running into the door locks. Never have I really, in the long, about all the gray hairs here, been able to turn down so many people. My staff is exhausted from answering telephones at the residential center, listening to people beg for a bed. It's not humane. People shouldn't have to beg for treatment. You just shouldn't.
Since you say you've been in this a really long time, and you and I are sporting the same hair color.
[laughing]
What would be, on an average, the cost of treatment?
So for my facility? So my facility, the main care rate is $102 a day. And main care rate only covers the cost of the clinical expense of the stay. So room and board costs have to come from some of the contracted dollars or from charging room and board. So it probably averages anywhere between $140 and $150 a day.
Okay. And you said sometimes people are there for half a year?
Correct. Or they can stay a max of 180 days.
And average person stays two months, three months more?
No, the average person that, it stays about, I think the average length of stay now is like between about four and a half months.
Four and a half months. That'd have roughly a cost of about $150 per day. Okay. What is success?
So success, when everyone asks me that question, I always go, "I don't know what success is." So success is the two gentlemen that were up here before me. I don't keep track of those numbers.
But I've been in your facility for three months, and what is the determination for getting?
For leaving. So for completing the program, we want you to have a support system for your recovery through the Recovery Network. We want you to have probably some outpatient set up for you there. We want you to have a means to support yourself and a clean and sober place to live. And so that, for most people, that takes about four and a half months. Our success rate, if you call it success, completion rate, I think last year was about 60%. So about 60% of the people entering into our program actually had what we call a graduation or a completion. But when you talk about residential care, remember that you're talking about the people who actually failed probably out of several treatment centers and are really in a chronic stage of their illness. So they are at the end of the rope. So it's about 60. I think our contract, with our contracts, we have standards. And I believe the standard for the contract is 65%. But the national standard for people completing a residential center is only 49%. So although we were slightly below our standard for our contract, we were above the national standard set by the federal government.
Rep. Gutte, you look like you-
No, no, not yet.
Rep. Sandmore and Deshaun.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could comment on a piece of the administration's testimony here that they say, "The administration strongly opposes the bill's provision that would provide a non-competitive contract in perpetuity to the Maine Association of Substance Abuse Providers." Thoughts on that? I mean, I can understand why they're objecting to that and that we'd like it to be competitive, as most of the contracts are.
Here, have a microphone, that's all.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Did you catch everything I said?
I did, I did. So your question is in regard to why award it to a sole-sourced agency versus bidding it out?
Right. And I would just add that I think all of us-
Again.
That if there's any way we can improve the bill, we certainly want to strive to that. So any ideas about how we can make it better or why it's the offered one?
So I can't, you know, you'd have to probably ask the authors of that. Mesa certainly did not request that they be placed in the bill. It was, we were asked if we would be willing to do that and we were, I think if I'm not, and I'm not speaking for the authors of the bill, but you're talking about time. Anytime you do an RFP, it has to be written, it has to go out to bid, and then it goes out to bid, and then... So if you're really talking about starting up recovery centers, which Mesa has the expertise in that, along with MAR, with our expertise in developing and opening the Portland Center, you're talking probably at least a year out by the time an RFP got awarded, it got done. Mesa has the connections they need. They have, through MAR, they have a connection with the Bangor area recovery network, which is a recovery center up there. We know that the Augusta area has started working, a small recovery center moving forward. So really, to move this forward, it makes sense, I'm assuming, to give it to an organization that has the expertise and the experience to do that. Certainly, without a bid, Mesa would place a bid there. But again, you have to understand, when you do grants, there, when you put out a RFP, there's a lot of work. There's also a lot of expense that goes out to an RFP. And so with limited dollars, and I'm not saying I'm not grateful for the dollars that are here, I am, but it's limited. And so now your, some of your money is going to be spent up in administrative costs to administer and write an RFP.
So it's more about expediency than, as was suggested, politically connected?
We're not a political group. We're not politically connected. We are an affiliation of providers here in town. We do, as you know, are, are very involved with advocacy for the work that we do here and very interested in laws and funding and are very outspoken for that because we're very passionate about the work that we do with prevention, treatment, and recovery. So we're not a very well-political connected group, but I guess we have friends that believe in our work, is how I would put it differently.
Rep. Deshaun.
Thank you. Success rate is 60%. What percentage of those who successfully complete relapse? And how do you handle relapse?
So I can't answer the numbers because I don't, we don't do in our agency, long-term studies on how people leave. But let me share with you how we believe relapse. We know that substance use disorders is a chronic relapsing disease. And years ago, as you said, Gray Harris, when somebody relapsed, we, I, I feel, I, we used to tell you, "Leave treatment." I can't believe we did that. We'd say, "I don't believe..." So I don't know what they were supposed to do. So now when a client relapses, even when they're in treatment, if they happen to relapse, we look at that. We look at that, what happened here? What do we need to do? Let's reevaluate. Let's make a plan. So if a client relapsed and came back to us and said, "I completed the program, but when I got out there, it was really too hard for me. I didn't have my support," we would help them by getting them reassessed and probably going to an outpatient setting, probably not needing to come back to a full, you know, four-month program, but be able to look at them and say, "Okay, what happened here? What, what happened? And let's move forward." So we learn from that. Similar to what we do with people who are obese, you know, I'm a chronic weight watcher. I've been a lactate member four times. And so eventually, I have to back up and look and say, "Okay, where have I gone wrong?" You know, "What have I done? What do I need to do to reevaluate my life and move forward?" Well, substance use disorders aren't any different. So when people relapse, you look at that and say, "Okay, what happened here? What do we need to do to put in place to move forward?" You're welcome.
Rep. Sandmore? I mean, Sanderson? F D S, right?
Thank you.
That's the A D.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. I have a couple of questions here. Ms. Kimball, you say that you were asked to be, to be in, can you tell me who asked you to be?
No, we did not, we were not asked.
You didn't just state that you were asked to do this in, in here?
Me, did, do the testimony?
No, no, no.
Be in the bill?
Be in the bill.
We were not asked. When we saw the bill printed, we realized we were in the bill.
Okay. Do you know who authored the bill?
Yes. The bill was cosponsored by Senator Thibodeau and Representative Bies.
All right, thank you. A couple of other questions here. I'm reading part D in what would be Mesa's, Mesa's duties under here. And it says to coordinate with law enforcement and facilitate the delivery of effective prevention. Can you kind of give me a very quick overview of it?
So what exactly does that mean? What will you be coordinating with law enforcement? And how are you going to facilitate? So currently, Darren Ripley, who is on MAR, works for MAR, is working with the local police departments in developing some of the programs similar to Project Hope here in Augusta and in the area. And so he works very closely with law enforcement. And what he does is, he works very closely with recovery coaches. Darren trains and does trainings on people who become recovery coaches, who are peers, people in recovery. And so Darren works directly with the police department and coordinates some of those services because as said earlier, police aren't experts, particularly in the field of addiction. And so he is there to support them in trying to find ways that peers can be supportive to people in the criminal justice system. He works with some physicians' offices to talk about peer recovery programs and some of the MATs. Again, he does, I think I have here a list of things that Darren does. I know it's here somewhere.
If you could find that, provide that to the committee.
I do, it's right here. May the line, it's traditionally covered. Right here. So definitely, MATs, he's been very involved with all of that. I mean, Darren's done things like, I joke, Darren through a small grant developed an app for your smartphone, that you can actually hit the app and it tells you where treatment centers are located, where AA and NA meetings are located, where some shelters and some food. And he actually developed that, that app, that through a grant that MAR got, so we're able to do that. So that's kind of the work that Darren does as that front person.
And who else do you have for staff? I'm trying to look at the $700,000 appropriation and, I want to bring that up.
So the $700,000 that's there would go to open recovery centers. So what we would do is, and I have some more information on the recovery centers, the work that's done there. Pass this out. So that money would be helped to start and operate recovery centers throughout the state. Depending on the money, we don't know what, how that would work out. We haven't, we do not have a detailed budget on that. But do know, what we know works in a recovery center, we would like to duplicate in other areas of the state. Maine is a very rural state with, particularly with people trying to get support for their recovery back in communities similar to Washington County, Arusti County. So this money would be spent, not necessarily on staff, but really on trying to develop and open recovery centers throughout Maine.
Okay, but the development piece, that is what staff will be doing. How much of this $700,000 goes directly to treatment or individuals?
Okay, it's, it's money for recovery.
Or recovery.
So that's different than treatment. So the money that Mesa would spend, we have not developed a budget on that. If you would like us to, to do that for you a little bit, we could try to do that in a quick forum. But again, we have one executive director and we have currently one employee in MAR. We no longer have an employee with MASA because of loss of some funding. So, but, so that's current staff that we have. We have a part-time bookkeeper. So what we would do is start developing a way and a budget to spend this money. And again, any contract with a stay is accountable money. You have to submit a budget, they have to look at the budget. Trust me, you're audited four times over for any contract that you have with state funding. And we would assume that that would be the same as, as other contracts that we've had in the past.
Okay. Just one last question. Now, it's my understanding that Mesa had a contract with state, and that was not renewed?
That contract was given to us for this year and we were all set. And then roughly on July 15th of the fiscal year, the contract was pulled.
Do you know why? What were the reasons for?
We, we were told that they believed they could do the services, the state could do the services themselves.
Can you provide documentation?
That's what they told us?
Yeah.
I would have to ask Ruth Gleyer, the executive director. I will share with you that it really was a blip to us. We really did not, at any point in time, ever were told by the state that they weren't happy with the services we provided, that we weren't doing what the state appeared to do. And again, we had developed a budget, submitted that budget, we're all set to sign contracts, and then we were told on the 15th that our contract would end on December 31st. And so our contract ended December 31st with the state.
Thank you.
Senator Kimball?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. First of all, you, this name of the document, it says, "Talking points out of the truth of how the AFM, the commission of major..." of how the AFM, the commissioner made you. Does anyone know the source of this here? Where is this coming from? Somebody just asked if you had anything else?
I handed you out minutes from the Portland Recovery Center, and then I handed you out the talking points.
Yes. Okay, this is...
From the Maine Alliance for Addiction Recovery.
Okay.
Those are two things that I...
Thank you very much. See, Mr. A. Hilson is here, perhaps not asking for now, but for the work session, perhaps you could provide the committees with some more detail about the RFP process, about how long it would take to do something like this with the usual RFP, these are expedited pieces. Thanks very much.
Representative Gutten?
Representative Rockley, if you would like to do the work sessions as we work through this other expedite.
We can try to make that happen. It's been quick, but I'm certainly going to talk to Ruth Gleyer and some of the memberships so we can make sure that somebody is available for any questions that you have in regards to the contract.
Thank you.
I can do that. I'm going to ask a favor of the group. It's a simple favor. The little babies that are born in our hospital are not drug addicted. They're drug-exposed infants, and to label them as addicts at the time of their birth is really stigmatizing them. They are drug-exposed infants that have a little bit of a struggle, and some of them will be just fine, and others, it will be a longer struggle. But if you could be respectful and not refer to them as born addicted, they are drug-exposed infants, and they are adorable. And if you see them grow up, they're even cuter.
Last question, Representative Sanderson?
Thank you. This is kind of an opinion question. One of the concerns that I have about this bill is we're hearing this today, and then we've got a work session, work session, work session. There's not a lot of complication in the bill, in the language itself, but the problem and the solutions are complicated. And you just stated that it's got to be very, it's kind of quick to try and get somebody here. Would you benefit from having more time to contact people and get them here later?
You're dying. I can't wait any longer. I'm sorry. I mean, I would like to...
Thank you.
If we're going to get this right, we need to do it right.
You can get it right in a short period of time.
And I do have a daughter. She was addicted when she was...
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you very much.
Leslie Skillem.
Remind everybody, this is number nine of 52.
Like number nine? So good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Leslie Skillem, and I work and live in Portland, Maine. I am program manager for Main Behavioral Healthcare's Trauma Intervention Program, otherwise known as TIP. TIP is a team of well-trained volunteers who provide emotional and practical support services to survivors of tragedy within the immediate aftermath of an event. TIP volunteers are requested by first responders 24/7 throughout Cumberland County. TIP responds to all requests from tragic events that make the six o'clock news to those that are equally tragic but remain private. As the program manager, I am also a 10-year volunteer. I have been requested to come and be alongside hundreds of survivors of tragedy, being in the position I have witnessed the stages of shock and emotional anguish, at least following the sudden death of an infant, a teen, a four, a death by suicide, just to mention a few. Over the past two years, TIP has seen a growing need for our services when someone has just died of an overdose. I would say over the past year, three per month, and over the last six months, up to six per month. Those who care for and love the victim are who I would like to just address today. As a TIP volunteer walking into a crisis, we only know the tip of the iceberg about who our clients are and the challenges that they are facing leading up to the moment that we are introduced. That being said, we have come to learn that the loved ones of those who have died of an overdose are people who have been living for years, even decades, in emotional pain, society-imposed shame, isolation, frustration, and anger, knowing that at any time their loved one may die before they're able to get treatment for their disease. These survivors are wrapped with guilt, and you hear them saying, I should have done more. I told him he could not live him anymore, and now he's dead. Feelings of shame and isolation. We hear this by them saying, I could not talk to anyone about this. No one would understand what we've been going through. We also hear their frustration and anger when they say things like, we tried, she tried, to get help, but we couldn't get it. He had no insurance, we could not afford the treatment. The places that take uninsured are either full or too far away. When he was ready, the help wasn't there. So TIP volunteers are walking into the homes of those that live in four-story walk-ups or six-bedroom homes on the force side. These overdose tragedies are the great equalizer. They have no socioeconomic boundaries. Your kid's friends, your friend's grandchildren, even your neighbors themselves are dying. I was compelled to speak today because my blinders have been removed. I have witnessed the aftermath of overdose deaths, and these experiences have torn them off. There are so many in our state who struggle to find treatment for their drug dependency. Cities and towns across our state are pulling in area resources to work collaboratively on initiatives to address the drug epidemic in their communities, but your help is needed as well also. An expansion of the main care eligibility so those seeking treatment are insured, funding for the opening of detox centers, funding for ongoing treatment centers and services for the uninsured, these are major areas where support is needed. I know as a TIP volunteer, the tragedy happens every minute of every day. People die, and those that are left behind are suffering. When someone dies of an overdose, too many times, there is one unrelenting and lingering